Okay, good evening. Commissioners, city staff, and members of the public, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission, August 24th, 2021, to order. Would you please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Jessica, you want to do roll call, please?
Okay. Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Dome?
Here.
Commissioner Paul?
Here.
Vice Chair Rainey and Commissioner Ramirez both informed us in advance that they would be absent. Commissioner Serrato?
Present.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
All right. Reviewing the minutes, are there any concerns, questions about the minutes? If there are known, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And I understand there's no written communications? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call on that.
Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Dome?
Approved.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Serrato?
Abstain.
I'm sorry. And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and there are written communications? There are none?
Actually, there is, there's one piece of, I'm sorry, I'm down here. I know. It's a little bit different.
I don't know where it's coming from.
There is one piece of written communications that was placed on the dais. It is some information and some minor modifications to the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution that's been proposed for the omnibus. And Principal Planner Nicholas will get into that as he goes through, but it's just some of the exhibits for that.
Okay. Thank you. Future neighborhood meetings?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. And oral communications? I don't, Jessica, there's none, I don't think, right? All right, so I'd like to open the public hearing for zoning code amendment PL 210152 to requesting a series of Escondido zoning code amendments to address changes in state laws, correct errors, and clarify or improve existing regulations. I understand there's a staff presentation.
Yes, good evening. Planning Commissioner Shawn Nicholas, Principal Planner. The item before you this evening is the 2021 version of the Omnibus Zoning Code update. So some background quickly. This is, the first time that we had an Omnibus zoning code update was in 2017, and as I said, this is the latest version of that. This is a yearly activity meant to continually clean up and clarify and mostly also update pursuant to ever-changing state laws to keep our zoning code up-to-date and current with requirements. A majority of the items that are before the Planning Commission are minor, particularly formatting or clarification of existing requirements, and a list of those articles are on page two of your agenda report. Additionally, the Planning Commission is here as the action before you is making a recommendation to the City Council. So, as Director Finstone mentioned, before we move forward, I wanted to address the items that were placed at the dais this evening. In preparation for this evening, following the preparation of our, the agenda reports before Planning Commission, three additional items became clear that staff wanted to address. And so those three items have to do with Article 47, Section 33-924, A6, A through D, I know that's a mouthful. In essence, it's the removal of the phrase "land use designation" following the general plan. The purpose of that is because we want to ensure that we're ensuring compliance with the general plan in whole, not just the general plan land use designation. So that's the basis behind that. Secondly, there was the Section 33926, which is the non-removal of SEQA from the title. So since we're not removing the removal, two negatives equal positive, and we will leave SEQA there in the title. And so that's what that reflects. Lastly, Section 33-1395 clarifies where freestanding signs can be located in an easement. There was some questions regarding, you know, there is most likely an opportunity for these types of signs to be located in easements. It was an issue that was actually brought to staff's attention by the Utilities Department. And so to ensure that we are addressing both their concerns, but also allowing for flexibility, staff has provided to you this evening with additional language, except that, I should say, signs can be located within an easement area as long as they are able to get prior written approval from all easement holders. So that will address and clarify that that's just going to be a component of the process. So that is reflected in the new attachment one that was provided to you, which is the strike-through and underlines of all the proposed and new language, or and remove language. And then Exhibit B, which is to your resolution this evening, which is just the clean copy that would ultimately, potentially, if approved, would go into what it would look like when it goes into our zoning code. So this evening, when staff makes our recommendation, it will be the recommendation utilizing this updated Exhibit B. So I just wanted to note that before we move forward. As I said, a majority of the items before the Planning Commission are minor in nature, but there are three items that we discussed a little bit more detail on within your staff report, and I just wanted to highlight those in our presentation this evening. The first of which has to do with an amendment to the East Valley Parkway specific plan, in particular, the discretionary review requirement for new drive-through uses. Currently, it is, only requires a plot plan, and staff is recommending that a conditional use permit be required for any new drive-throughs moving forward. This was actually a change that was intended to be made in previous modifications to the specific plan, but due to a clerical error by staff at that time, it did not make the, it did not get updated appropriately. And staff has analyzed this and believes that, staff's position is that this is the appropriate level of review for these types of new uses within the specific plan area. And again, that's the conditional use permit requirement. Staff is recommending this process regardless of any potential future modifications to the specific plan. Staff would even, would recommend that change even associated with that potential amendment in the future that may or may not come forward. And associated with SEQA, the change is not considered a project pursuant to SEQA Code Section 15378B5. And even if it were to be considered a project, it would be exempt pursuant to 15061B3. And obviously, with all discretionary projects, as Planning Commission knows, each individual project will subsequently receive individual SEQA analysis as well. Probably Planning Commission noticed that there are a few modifications to our ADU local ordinance, which is Article 70 this evening. One particular item that we're updating has to do with the requirements or allowed ADUs associated with multifamily residential uses. So this modification will clarify our local ordinance and bring it much more, will bring it more inconsistent with state law. And that would be to clarify that with multifamily development, they can either have a attached ADU product or a detached ADU product, but not both. And both attached and detached have requirements associated with them, but state law does include that either-or situation. And the way our local ordinance is currently written, it is a bit ambiguous on whether it is an or situation. So to clarify, to be clear, that we are consistent with state law, and that's the interpretation, that's the change that staff felt would be appropriate to bring forward. Lastly, Planning Commission probably noticed that Article 67 was fully being removed and then being replaced with a new density bonus and residential incentive section. I want to be very clear that this new section is wholly to bring it into compliance with the new state law, as well as removing items that are no longer, can be requested by local jurisdictions, in particular, in this case, is the density bonus report. But almost more so with bringing it in line, the way in which it was written previously, our local requirements, it was very difficult for staff and applicants and residents to understand, and this is a much more straightforward, easier means in which staff and residents can know what their requirements are, what their potential number of incentives are, the density bonus that they would be applicable for. So we feel that this will be a much easier way to enforce the requirements moving forward. Associated with environmental review for all of these changes, staff has provided a multitude of SEQA exemptions on pages four and five of your agenda report, not a least of which is, again, 15378B5. And in that analysis includes the modification to the East Valley Parkway specific plan amendment. With that, staff does recommend, the Planning Commission recommend, approval of the various components of the 2021 Omnibus to City Council, and again, that is with the updated Exhibit B that has been provided to Planning Commission this evening. With that, that does conclude staff's presentation, and staff is available to address any of the Planning Commissioner's questions.
Questions for clarification? Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, thanks. Shawn, I think, I sent you an email before with some questions. So the first one is about the East Valley Parkway specific plan, and I don't see those changes in, and the changes that you're proposing in any of the attachments.
So I would refer you to page 86, which is in your, is my, in your attachment one.
There it is.
And I could see very well how you could miss it, because it really is just this one table that is going from the P with a star to a C. That's literally the only change that we're making here, to the, to the East Valley specific plan.
And you're saying that this change was, should have been made previously at some other public meeting by the Planning Commission, or the City Council, or somebody?
That's correct. In 2019, we did a comprehensive land use study and looked at various land uses throughout the city, and made some changes to the general commercial zone, downtown specific plan, South Center City specific plan, and the East Valley specific plan for a variety of uses that would require, in the city's opinion, additional review. Drive-through facilities were added to that list of projects, or of use types that require a CUP now. It just was missed in the East Valley specific plan.
Okay. So could, can we put that, that document in the, in the record here someplace to show the reason for the change?
We could cite the, we could cite the prior approval, the prior resolution on staff report.
Sure.
Okay. Definitely.
Okay, and then on page three, Shawn? I didn't understand that requirement.
Yes, so I will tell you that the state ADU law is one of the most terribly written pieces of state legislation I have ever seen in almost 20 years of being a professional planner. And so I am, I do not blame you, or, you know, I can see why you're having problems with the code, because it took us a while to, believe me, when this came into effect. So in short, what this is trying to say is, if you have a multifamily residential structure, and you're going to do an attached ADU to the multifamily residential structure, you are allowed to have at least one attached ADU, and, but it has to be converted from non-habitable space. That's an important distinction. Now, how it gets more confusing is if you have more than, and let's make it easy, eight, let's say you have eight, multifamily structure with eight units, well, 25% of those units would be then two. So the, what state law and what our code now says is, you can either do at least one, or if 25% of the units equals more than one, so in our example is two, they could potentially have two attached ADUs. But again, it must be from non-habitable space. So that's the very particular requirement in how you calculate potential number of attached ADUs. Does that help in terms of your thought process and what that requirement is saying?
Oh, sure.
But I can appreciate your frustration.
Thank you very much for the clarification. And then page nine, I had a question about the 45 consecutive days?
Yes, so as it is written, it is written to be just one 45-day consecutive period. Typically, staff has seen that typically to be associated with the Christmas time. But again, as it is written right now, it is a once, once a year for 45 consecutive days.
So, so can we word this sentence that way? Temporary uses in holiday lighting not to exceed one 45 consecutive day, period?
If that's, if that's, the commission feels that that would clarify the issue, that's definitely an option yes, sir.
Page 10, Sandtech.
So this is directly having to do, the question is, is why is the Sandtech threshold being removed? It's paragraph four on page, on, on page 10, paragraph four. And that has to directly do, deal with recent SEQA changes at the state level, where we no longer can evaluate projects based on level of service, LOS, which is, I'm sure what Planning Commission is very familiar with, and it's how also our general plan evaluates potential traffic impacts, and transitions it more into the vehicle miles traveled. So it's just reflecting those, that change to state law. And then we've also added, to page 12, little c, is that, oh, nope, page 12, yes, page 12 at the top, little c, talks about level of service. And so what we've done there is while we can't utilize the level of service, that Sandtech evaluation for the purposes of SEQA, our requirements in our general plan still have the level of service evaluation. And so we are still needing to show compliance with that as part of our general plan compliance finding.
Excellent. Perfect. And then page 11, how did we get to 2.0 value?
Yes, so the question there is where did the threshold of the two, two metric ton of COE was determined, and that's on page 11, big C, let me just get back to it here for those following along at home. So that, again, is directly related to, again, changing greenhouse gas requirements and evaluation with SEQA, and in particular, comes out of our climate action plan that was recently adopted. And so through the climate action plan, it was determined that that two metric tons was the threshold in terms of potential impacts. So that's where that threshold comes from that we're utilizing here, is directly from that document that was recently approved.
Oh, okay, good. So it's not a mistake or something?
No, it's not, yeah, that's exactly where it comes from.
Great. Seagram, you got that one? Oh, and then Article 55, Section 33, you changed all the "shoulds" to "shall," and that seems prescriptive to me.
So, again, with a big part of what we do, and you can see it there, starting on like page 13 in several places, Commissioner Paul noted that we've changed several of our "shoulds" to "shall." Part of our code goal is always to make clarity. And when you have a "should," it provides unclarity. It provides, well, then what is, what is the resident or applicant thinking, well, what is my target? Well, you know, to be able to have consistency, which is our goal as staff, that everyone has the very clear requirements in which everyone is applicable to, using "shall" provides very definitive direction in terms of what the requirements are, very clear, and what the expectation is to staff, because, you know, our goal is to not make interpretations. Staff doesn't want to make interpretations. We want to apply the code as it is, you know, designated by Planning Commission and ultimately City Council. So that's the goal, is just to provide simplification, to make it very clear what the requirements are, so there's no question of "should" and what, you know, what is the, the potential moving target, potentially?
Okay, so, so when I was reading those, some of them seem like you should use capital letters, and then it's now it's you shall use capital letters, and it seemed like a matter of opinion, that, that we weren't really cleaning up something. We were now taking a suggestion and saying, you gotta do it.
Some of that has to do with, with our move more towards AP style?
Oh, I was just using capitals as an example of, of an arbitrary kind of thing.
Absolutely, Commissioner Paul. And again, that's to provide, not to, so everyone knows that that's what they need to do, not should do, that that's what they need to do. And that's the purpose behind the "shall" change.
Right. Okay, I'm just saying, I thank you very much. And so when we debate, I'll talk about, you know, it says you should do a black roof, and I'm saying, now it's gonna say you shall do a black roof, and I'm thinking that, that takes care, it takes out all of your potential options. Okay, but we'll talk about that when we debate. And then freestanding signs, you took care of that? And, oh, and then Article 67. So I just made a note here, could please provide assurance that there are no changes which deviate from state law, except as reviewed and approved at previous public meetings? If you would just give us that assurance, because there's a lot of material there.
Yeah, and as, thank you, Commissioner Paul, and yes, as stated, this is just to be exactly consistent with state law, with current state law that came into effect in 2020. And again, just reformat it for the ease of usability for both staff and residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wyler?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Paul.
You took care.
Because you hit a lot of the same things I was, too. If we could, though, go back to, and it's just for my own clarification, but it's on page nine, and that's, oh, the, the temporary uses in holiday lighting on the 45 consecutive days. So this exemption, what, what if somebody only does this for 39 days, and then, you know, they want another time where they're gonna do it for another 39 days for a different holiday, or for a different reason? Then you're exceeding the total 45 days. So I'm just looking for a little clarification on that.
So the way that it is written, again, it is for one consecutive 45 days. So if someone chooses not to utilize the full 45 days, unfortunately, that is their one-time event, similar to what Commissioner Paul said. Perhaps to clarify that you get the one 45-day period, but again, you don't get like one 39-day, and then six days later over here, it's, it's that, what, the way it's written now, it is that one time, potentially up to 45 days.
And, well, that's where I jumped up here, because the way I read it, that's not the case. I think you can have more than one 45-day period. You just need a space in between those 45 days.
That's what you were, that's what you were asking.
So I think it's actually 45 days, and I, I was kind of speaking this as an attorney, but I'm also speaking of this as someone who loves to put up holiday lights. So the way I read this is, I could put up my Halloween lights for 45 days, take them down, they're all down, one day later, start getting those, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving lights, whatever I got going.
Yeah, and that kind of, that, that's why I was looking for that clarification, is what are we really trying to accomplish? Is it, look, you, you just can't put up lights and have them there for 80 days without taking them back down, but if you're changing the seasons, and can you have multiple 45, maximum 45-day periods? I guess I'm looking for intent.
Yeah, and I would say staff is looking for direction, I would say, for Planning Commission, and a recommendation. Obviously, you've heard potentially two, two views of the same code, which is what we're here to try to clarify. So if their commission wants to make a recommendation on how to make that clear of what that intent is, we can definitely incorporate that in any, any recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, well, what was, I mean, it's not a real big change in the code, per se, so I'm wondering how this was applied in the past?
I, you know, I really can't say how it became an issue. I don't know that it did, it's just one of those things, as we read through codes, we decided to muddy it up even more than it already had been. I've, I've maybe crafted a little language that might, might simplify it or might work. Feel free to include this in any type of motion that you might make, and towards the end of the hearing here. Temporary uses in holiday lighting not exceeding one consecutive 45-day period during any one calendar year, as defined, et cetera, et cetera. You get one time for 45 days each year.
That's it. So you, so you get Christmas, and that's it.
Do you want to do Christmas, or do you want to do Halloween?
Well, look, I want to do Easter, you know.
The point of the change, I think it's important to note, the point of the change of this D is not to change the intent of this at all. The only change this is going for is to, one, conform with our AP style requirement. So as we changed 33714, and I think there were some maybe more substantial kind of changes in here, including E, any shielded light fixture that produces, you know, that was kind of a more substantial change. We went through the whole section and changed 45 to that spell-out 45, parenthetical 45 convention, which is not AP style, and so it just says 45. Same thing for the one, one-year period. We don't need one, 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 okay? So that was changed. And then the Staff Development Committee is a little more substantial change, where it's determined by the Director of the Community Development rather than a Staff Development Committee. But there was no intent to change the intent of the language here, and I'm telling you, the plain language of this ordinance states temporary uses of holiday lighting is not exceeding 45 consecutive days during any one-year, one-year period. So as long as you're not exceeding 45 consecutive days putting up your lights, then you're compliant with our code. And like I said, that could be more than one 45-day period.
He's asking, is that the intent, to have it to be more?
Well, we don't necessarily need to go to the intent, because I'm telling you, the plain language of the code states this. You know, I don't think, why are we exploring what's the intent, because the language is what the language is.
We want to clarify the language.
Well, because we're curious to know what is the intent.
But it doesn't matter as a matter of law when looking at our code, is what I'm saying. If we want to change the intent, and we look at, I'll tell you what the intent is. The intent is what I said, multiple 45-day periods, because the plain language governs what is the intent. We don't really care what the intent is unless it's ambiguous, and this is not ambiguous. If you want to change what I'm telling you, what the intent and meaning of this is, that you should only have one 45 days in the year, and that's it, that's a change to our intent and to the code itself, which is not what staff is proposing with this omnibus.
And I think that was the purpose of my question, is we're looking this as an omnibus sort of, you know, big thing, where we're trying to decrease, I would say, interpretation. And if, if you're reading this, and everybody reads it, that you can have multiple 45 days, and, and that's the way it's always been, all right, that's fine with me, I don't want to make it an issue. You know what, it was, just got brought, I, I saw it, and so it sort of got brought to my, you know, it just sort of stuck, stuck out, like, okay, what does this really, really mean? That, and, and if the true meaning and the true intent is what you just said, hey, and multiple 45-day periods, terrific.
If I, if I may, I, I would guess that the intent when, when it was written was to get 45 days once a year. To me, that sounds like the logical reason that we would have a provision like that in our zoning code. I know some people like Easter lights, and some people might like Saint Patrick's Day lights, and, and the like, but, but, you know, reading it, it, to me, would be intended for, you know, December holidays.
So that, so that demonstrates that there's one interpretation and two interpretations?
Well, I'm not saying that, that it can't, that it specifies that that's the case, but I think that that, when this was crafted, that was probably the idea.
I would just also add, Commissioners, is that, I think the key thing is that the main change to this code section was for a formatting basis, and wasn't meant to change any type of, or modify any potential flexibility that the code would provide us in terms of being able to, to look at a situation and determine what is best. And I feel that everyone would agree that most of this has to do with community feeling, community types of events, and, and types of displays that, you know, helps improve the overall feel, especially during potentially holiday season. So I don't think that that was meant to necessarily get into the intent and the subject in terms of it, and I think you're hearing from staff that our recommendation is to, that we believe that as it's written, that they provides for some flexibility, and what we've tried to do is reformat and also bring it down to a simpler level of, you know, in essence, review, as many projects and many items are at the, subject to the approval of the Community Development Director, and it just maintains that flexibility as well in the future. that flexibility as well in the future.
Up to you guys, if you want to change something.
Okay, well, I didn't want to get stuck on one item.
Right, right, but Commissioner Wiler, let's just clarify this one, then. So Commissioner Paul, you had recommended that we have one in there, so are you now retracting that to have it be just as is?
No, I figured after we asked staff for clarification, we'll
Okay, we'll have that discussion.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I was, I was asking for some clarification regarding what Commissioner Paul suggested, and he's saying that we need to wait until we have our deliberate, deliberative discussion.
Got it, got it, thank you. And just a matter of, again, on clarification, so on page 13, Item E, yeah, I think it's the only small E there, where we're saying, you know, previously, we're saying that LOS cannot be used, you know, pursuant to new state law and SEQA. However, in here, we're saying that a project's effect on automobile delay shall not constitute a significant environmental impact. So isn't automobile delay level of service? Isn't that, you know, when you are determining what your level of service, isn't it the, the delay that automobiles are experiencing at a certain intersection? So I guess I'm not understanding the purpose of adding this language, when we're already kind of clarifying that level of service is not a part of the SEQA review, although we can have level of service as a part of our quality of life element, I guess, in our code. I know I'm not wording this right, I'm just, you know, just another nitpicking thing.
Sorry. It's, the, the purpose of it, and I'll, you know, Owen, you can come up here after this, but the purpose of this, why we put this in, it's a saving provision. This 33926 originally contemplated LOS and VMT for the SEQA traffic, right? But now, we want to make sure, instead of going through and, and making specific changes to A, B, C, and D, we have a provision here that E, no matter what, the SEQA guidelines 15064.3 controls, and we're not going to be doing level of service with respect to SEQA analysis anymore. So it's really just a, it's just a saving provision that clarifies that we're following the SEQA guidelines.
Okay. And then, on the, on page 15, small letter B, where we're talking about slope heights, we still have wording in here, even though we're changing all the shoulds to shall, we still have wording that says, grading designers should strive to conform to the following.
Yep, I noticed that when Commissioner Paul was bringing it up right now, and I recommend that we change that should to shall, to be consistent with the rest.
Okay. And I suspected, well, I just saw the inconsistency, so, okay. And quite frankly, I do agree with adding the word shall. It does give, hey, here's the line, you go on this side, you're not okay, you're on the other side, you're okay. So I do agree with that, with that. On page 19, and granted, it's more of a clarification than it is related to the change that's proposed, but it's under Item G, down at the bottom. And, you know, it's preservation of natural and cultural features. And our current code says, you know, we gotta, we need to preserve the undisturbed steep slopes greater than 35%. Now, the clarification for me, and I'm looking at it from a development perspective, is there a minimum area of that 35% slope that you can't, that constitutes, all right, you can't develop it? In other words, you might have, I don't know, you got a 20-acre site, and then 1,500 square feet of it is greater than 35% slope, therefore, this whole area you can't disturb. And maybe this is not the place for this, but it did strike me as, you know, there's no, there's no minimum area.
I believe in, Owen Tunnel, our Assistant City Engineer, can probably speak to it better than I, but I believe that it's really intended to be the area that is over 35%.
Okay, and that's all right, it was just...
I think it is a little bit tricky. What I, how I've seen it applied in the past is, if you're grading into that area, and, and parts of that area are still, you know, what you'll see sometimes is a very small, steep, and you basically are grading across it, in, you know, into two less steep areas. But when your, your pads and your, are still sitting within an area that's otherwise 35%, but it has been, my impression, kind of a, an interpretation in many cases.
No, and I've seen this in another jurisdiction as well, and it has boiled down to an interpretation that, look, it's pretty insignificant. And, you know, it's kind of, okay, maybe over 35%, but it's so small that you just can't wipe out a whole area of potentially developable area, because you got this teeny-tiny, you know, area that's over 35%.
Yeah, I think what's kind of, like I said, has been the test, is that if it's kind of swallowed up in the overall grading, it's a bad, bad term, but
Okay.
It's so small that the grading kind of encompasses it, then it's been, you know, deemed insignificant.
Okay, I think I've got one, one final one, on page 83, and it's table, the table that's down near the bottom of page 83. So we've got some maximum permitted ADU sizes. And I don't know why I'm thinking this, and I thought I read it somewhere, in the new ADU codes that are coming down from the state, but I didn't think that they, that they allowed for restrictions, especially on the, on the larger ADUs, that you weren't allowed to have these sort of size restrictions. That, you know, regardless, if you want to put a 1,200 square-foot ADU on your lot, and you meet whatever the minimum ADU setbacks, you could have up to 1,200 square feet.
So based on the state law, and actually having had multiple conversations with HCD on this very issue, I will tell you this, that the state requirement is, at minimum, you have to allow 800 square feet. Now, our local ordinance goes above and beyond that, in that we allow for a minimum of up to 850 square feet. HCD has also, inconsistent with what we have done here, has stated that they are supportive of jurisdictions capping at 1,000 square feet. They're more concerned, actually, on bedrooms, and not regulating based on bedrooms more than size. So while HCD says, exactly as we live in here, more than one bedroom, 1,000 square feet, and limiting it to that, they're fine with it, as long as we don't say they're limited to one, two, three, four bedrooms. That's actually more of their, their concern. So as far as this is written in our code today, it is consistent with
Okay.
state law, and what direction we've gotten from HCD.
Okay, terrific. And like I said, I could have swore I read something different, but you know what, you guys looked into it more so than I did. That ends my comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Actually, this is questions for clarification to staff.
I do have a, probably a clarification, and I wanted to thank the City Attorney Kurt for the, an excellent explanation for that number 45. I'm going to go back to that question and ask, is I am, now I have a better understanding, and then I start looking elsewhere, and then my confusion is starting to come back, so I just wanted to have some clarification.
Mine, too.
So looking at the, you know, the Item D regarding the temporary use of holiday lighting not exceeding, and you cross it out, number 45. So that represent, the intent is not to be just 145, but after the 45 days, you take it down, and then you will have another extension. If you can, if you wanted to pull it up, you can. Is that correct? That's the number 45 represent?
Right, well, two things. One, that cross out of the 45 that's written was not intended to clarify the one 45 versus the other. It's just to remove the written 45 as a style convention, because AP style does not, it, you just put the number. And so, it's superfluous, it's extra to put that written 45 in there. And so as we cleaned up 33714, the section, we made sure to change some of that AP style stuff.
But then, when it says the consecutive days during any one year, then you cross it out, the one, and then you leave the one, the wording one in it, so that's...
Yeah, so, so in that case, that's just how you do it. In AP style, it's spelled out one hyphen year period.
So if I'm reading the next page, on number two, I don't have the page number in here, so it's kind of hard for me, too. But right, right under the Article 35, if you go all the way down, past E, and then, and then the purpose of this section is A, and then A1, A2, A3. So I wanted to ask a question on A, on number two, A2. It says, the project does not, in itself, or in conjunction with other pending and approved project, cause the number of units outside specified by an emergency respond time to exceed, and then you cross out 10, you know, percent, and then put it at the 10%. What does it mean? Because now, in my mind, that's so, that means you can exceed the 10% or no?
Again, that's just changing the 10, 10% convention. That was, that 10, 10%, those three words with the parentheses in it, was intended just to mean 10%. And it's confusing to actually have written 10, parentheses 10, and it's probably some attorney from the past, honestly, because I, because I think, you know, attorneys tend to write like that, and it's not really a good way of writing. But it's just like, let's make it really clear that it's 10%. So we'll put, we'll write it, and we'll put the number 10. But really, AP style only requires 10 and the percentage symbol, and that's it. So that's the only intent of what that change is in number two.
Commissioner Don, just to be clear, similar to the 45-day, it's just, it's not meant to change any requirements. It's not changing context or anything. It's just, it's just trying to make it clear that it's just the one number. There's no change in the requirement, though.
But
There's still flexibility inherent in that.
Yes, yes, yes. And I will just add one comment to that 45-day period, because I was looking at that more as a sitting back, and now that I see it, there is a problem with it. Because it's 45 consecutive days during any one-year period. I think it should be either 45, take out consecutive, 45 days during one-year period, or why do you need during any one-year period? You know, that's sort of weird, like, what do you, when will 45 consecutive days not be in a one-year period? Right?
Yeah, you can only do it, right.
Right, unless, unless that is the intent, to just do it once. So I'll admit, take that, retract when I was kind of on my high horse, saying that there's no ambiguity, ambiguity here. There is some ambiguity here, so I think that could
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for clarity? No? So if I could just ask, I'm curious, from the state's perspective, what is, what was the intent of the either/or for the ADUs? I'm just curious, why, why did they make that distinction?
You know, it was, it's funny, it's the, actually, the people who wrote this are state senators from San Francisco, and again, having read many state legislature, who knows? And quite honestly, I know there's a number of ADU law and housing law amendments that are before the state, the state legislature, again, this year, that we're waiting to see what's going to happen. So it might change, but just as it is written today, and why we want to just be consistent, so there is no confusion. Because we do, actually, I would say, get this question at least two to three times a week. And is it both? Is it one or the other? It's just, it is what it is, it's what the state legislature wrote, and we're just trying to be consistent with it.
Okay, so we don't really know why there's an either/or. Okay. All right. Okay, so public, is there any comments? Public testimony? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and internal discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Paul?
Okay, I think the intent was to have one 45-day period per year, personally. And that's, and if we're only going to clean things up, and we're not going to change them, then I think that's what we should make that clearer, that it's only one 45-day period per year. And then, the only other change I'm hung up on is the shoulds to shalls. You know, and you talked about in some places having flexibility, and you're, you're removing that flexibility when you change should to shall. And you talked about, you gave the example of the 35%, and if it's inconsequential, then should applies, because now you have a reason why it shouldn't be shall. And, and, you know, even the picture on that same page shows, you should move the house over here, instead of over here. Well, what if there's a huge boulder in the way? Well, then, I would rather have it should than shall. And if you put in shall, you're removing that flexibility. So those are my only two. Otherwise, I think that, you know, the document is great.
Commissioner Wiler, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, and I, and I think that there's another section after this, that particular section, where there are still exemptions, and there's still review that the zoning administrator or the, the community developer, Community Development Director can make a determination if there are these unusual sort of circumstances.
Right, and I, and I think you can justify that by saying, yeah, it says should. But when you, but we changed it to shall, I think you take away some of his discretion.
Well, maybe staff can help clarify that.
Well, my comment on this is, if you look at 331066, since on page 15, what we're talking about here, the first sentence of that first paragraph, to me, establishes that these are requirements. The criteria listed below are to be adhered to in the preparation of grading designs for private and public development projects. That's a requirement. And in the law, shall is a term that connotes mandatory, a mandatory requirement. Should is not a mandatory word. Should is, well, you should do it, but you don't have to, you know? But if it's saying are to be adhered to, that is a mandatory requirement. And so to be consistent, it should be shall throughout.
And Commissioner Paul, maybe to address the comment you, you made regarding, well, how can you, shall put it there, and there's some kind of impact, or some, something in the way. I would tell you that in going through this, and, you know, worked a lot with residents over the years, and in my time already here in Escondido, is that nothing of the shalls that we're doing here will impact or take away the flexibility for us to work with an individual property owner or individual developer, to still be able to look at any potential obstacle and turn it into an opportunity. That's not what any of these shoulds to shalls is doing this evening. It truly is providing clarity and certainty in the process, and clarity to people on these are very straightforward development standards, so that way it's clear what the requirements are, and what the expectation is. And I would tell you that I, I like having flexibility, because I want to help as many people as I can, but none of these things are going to impact that ability, if that helps you in any way in your thinking.
Yeah, and, and working with a lot of clients, I know that they're reading these codes, and it says, should do it, don't have to. And it's like, well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, you know, Mr. Client, however, you know, this is the intent. The intent is, you need to stay within this box, or there's a different process to go through in order to not adhere to this. I much prefer the, the shall, because it does give definiteness. Yeah, you shall do it. There's, there's not a should, you shall do it. But again, as, as was expressed, there are other ways to kind of work around it in the again, as, as was expressed, there are other ways to kind of work around it in these special type of circumstances.
And clarity and certainty is something the private sector always looks for.
Yes.
All right. Any other concerns? Mr. Wyler, any concerns? No? Discussion? Any discussion? Yeah, my, you answered, you brought up some of the few things that I had. Shall we then therefore make a motion to approve, I believe that's the action ahead of us, to approve?
That's correct. The, the motion would be to approve the, the resolution as presented through the modifications that were left on the dais for you, Exhibit B in that packet, in addition to whatever modifications that you would like to, to see. One, the two that I have marked are one at thirty-three, ten, sixty-six B to change should to shall in reference to, let me get it directly in front of me. Correct, it's the, yes. It's on the, the grading design, let's see.
On the grading.
Right. Page nineteen, correct?
Page fifteen.
Yeah, bottom of page fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry. So that one would be changing should to shall, and where it says grading designers should strive, it should say shall strive. And then the other one is to still get some clarification from the commission on the, the holiday lights. So that should be included in, that shall be included in your motion?
It shall be included in the motion. But shall, shall it be included as one is the question?
Am I, am I making the motion? So I would, I would move, to move approval as explained by our acting director, planning. Does that work?
As included the two items.
The two items that Adam mentioned, right, okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
And just a point of clarification.
You get forty-five days once during the year.
Okay. And, and again, so that's not changing any of the wording.
No.
Up to forty-five days total per year. Is that what you're saying?
Me?
Yeah. Or someone?
Well, gosh, I don't want to vote against this whole thing.
That's why I was asking Commissioner Paul if he, if he wants to include, you know, once, one forty-five day period during this, during a year.
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
Yeah, that was the intent.
I want to make it, make it clear that that's the intent.
Well, that's not even, that's not changing the code then, really.
Correct.
The code just remains the way it is.
I think there's.
Or are we changing the wording?
No, Adam proposed some wording.
Yeah, there was wording that I had, I had proposed earlier.
Okay, the wording that you had proposed.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Temporary uses in holiday lighting shall not exceed one consecutive forty-five day period per calendar year.
Right.
Right, and I think that takes out the ambiguity.
That takes out the ambiguity, for sure.
All right, and, and.
So, so it's effectively approving staff recommendation.
Right.
With, with these clarifications to.
The understood, the, what staff has understood to be the intent.
Right.
Right.
It needs a second.
I know. No, I just want to make sure Commissioner Wyler is comfortable moving forward.
I guess I don't like staff's interpretation. And it's, and it's only, and truly, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult on this at all. It's just, I know people that every holiday that comes up, they're decorating. They just are. That's just, they, they love it, their kids love it, the community, they seem to enjoy it.
They can still do it. They just have to follow the intensity rule. This is a waiver of the intensity limit, right?
I don't know. I, I guess I'm just not clear.
I don't think it's meant to have just one time forty-five days and that's it, right? Because that, that's not, that is not what I heard.
That, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. So what I've heard, and maybe I misunderstood again, is that you can do it within the forty-five days and then you take it down. Probably you can do it again. Thanksgiving, and then you take it down and you rest, and then holiday, Christmas, you put it up again. But in, it has to be in within the forty-five days period, correct?
For any one lighting activity.
Right, any one lighting.
Yeah, you know, and that, this has become a lot more.
Complicated, exactly. I thought I understood reading the language.
And we, how about this? Can we leave this as it's proposed here, and we'll bring this back with the next omnibus when we've thought it through a little bit better?
I think that might be a good idea.
You know what? It doesn't seem like it's actually been a problem. So code enforcement isn't going out and going, oh, you're at forty-six days, you got to take these down.
If we hear about it and it becomes an issue based on how it's.
Yeah, and maybe we just, I don't know. My feeling is, leave it alone. It hasn't been an issue. Don't change the code. If it becomes an issue, you know, then we bring it back here.
I agree.
As opposed to changing whatever, maybe what the intent was. That's kind of my feeling. I, I would, I would just assume not make any change to it and just leave it alone because it's not a problem. And I know we spent a half an hour talking about this one item.
Those lightings are very important. I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, so perhaps we should hear one more clarity on the motion?
But if, if that's the motion, that's the motion.
I'll, I'll recall my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Wyler, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. So I move to approve PL twenty-one, oh, one, five, two for the omnibus, omnibus zoning code update with the changes that were recommended by staff in the attached memorandum and the wording to Article fifty-five, Section three-three dash one, zero, six, six, small letter B, where grading designers shall conform to the following criteria.
Right.
And removing changes to little d on thirty-three, seven, one, four.
And that.
I second the motion. Roll call, please.
Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Don?
Approved.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Serrato?
Approve.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero with two absent.
On to current business. I understand there's a Brown Act presentation?
Correct. That'll be presented by our senior deputy city attorney, Kurt Whitman.
Yes, thank you, Chair Barbe. And thank you all on behalf of all holiday light enthusiasts across the great city of Escondido. Let's move on. The Brown Act, just a quick refresher. You all, when you received, when you started your terms, received a Brown Act memo, so I don't want to go over the whole Brown Act memo and all, all of that again. You have that, you should have that. If you don't, I could, I can provide that to you again. But I just wanted to provide a quick refresher because some things have arisen within the past year that we've dealt with and, and just want to bring those up. If you have any questions or things like that, we can, we can discuss them. So very quick presentation. General background, the Brown Act, Government Code, Section five-four-nine, fifty to five-four-nine, six-three currently, requires the planning commissions' work to be conducted in a manner transparent to the public. There's old, good old Ralph M. Brown right there, in case you ever wanted to know what he looked like. Each council board and commission member at the city receives a Brown Act memo, which I just mentioned upon commencement of serving their term. The overall objective is written in Government Code, Section five-four-nine, fifty. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people and delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. The public has a right to information and documents. The main rule, any communication constituting a majority of the legislative body, AKA a quorum, and so for us here in the planning commissions, four commissioners, concerning official business cannot take place outside of a properly noticed public meeting. And communications can be in any form, in person, email, text, phone call, virtual meeting, all of that constitutes a communication. Government Code five-four-nine, five-two-point-two, B one, I, I bold-faced a section here. It states that a majority of the members of a legislative body shall not, outside a meeting authorized by this chapter, use a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. And the section, section here, B two, states that this shall not be construed as preventing an employee or official of a local agency from engaging in separate conversations or communications outside of a meeting in order to answer questions or provide information regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of a local agency. If that person does not communicate to members of the legislative body the comments or position of any other member or members of the legislative body. So, for example, an agenda comes out, you've got a question on the agenda, you email staff about that, that's fine. You've done that individually and separately. And if you have that conversation, communication with staff, that's okay, as long as staff is not replying to all commissioners stating, hey, you know, so-and-so commissioner asked this question, just want to let everyone know, here's what's going on. All of a sudden, we have a discussion of, of more than a majority. So issue number one, kind of in that vein, serial meetings. A majority of members cannot use a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on an item of official business. And I think I mentioned this before, but there's, there's two forms of serial meetings that are often discussed, and it's the hub and spoke and the daisy chain. The hub and spoke is the idea that there's one commissioner, the hub of a wheel, and that commissioner is communicating to separate commissioners, you know, back and forth individually. But taken together as a whole, there are four commissioners involved. And that could also include a staff member representing the hub. If a staff member is asking each, one commissioner, two commissioners, three commissioners, four commissioners, the same questions, dealing with the same type of official business, that can constitute a, a Brown Act violation and be example of a hub and spoke communication. The other kind is daisy chain communication. It's the idea of a consecutive communication where one commissioner discusses with another, that commissioner in turn goes to another, that commissioner in turn goes to another, until you have four planning commissioners involved. Serial meetings. Issue number two, any questions on that, by the way, serial meetings? Good. Issue number two, sharing information. This has come up. We've talked about this. You know, how do, how do I share information? I found a really great article on a topic. I want to share that with the other planning commissioners. I think this will be really helpful. The way you would do that, you can only share information with each other at public meetings and in the context of specific agenda items. So even though you're, you're not really discussing a matter by sharing an information, like, let's say you email the whole commission and say, hey, I found this article. You're not discussing the matter. However, if that article relates to a ongoing business item or a current business item or something anticipated, that could be construed as a discussion of some sort. You're communicating something in relation to that, to that item. So if you want to share an article, and there's nothing wrong with that in general, if you want to do that, the proper way of doing that is at a public meeting. It's helpful, what I've recommended in the past, is it's helpful to provide that in advance to staff, specifically to the director and to our, our minutes clerk. And they will have that handy. Then you, as a commissioner, can introduce that item, bring that item, you know, forth at the public meeting itself. You know, I've, I've, I found an article dealing with such and such topic. I would like to present, to share that with the rest of the commission, and I sent that to staff already. And staff can respond and say, yep, we, we received that article. We'll make that available after the meeting and also make it available to the public, and it becomes part of the record for that specific item. Usually, it's, it's with a specific agenda item. If not, you might raise that at the end of the planning commission meeting in that commission communication, or commissioner communications, or whatever it's called at the, at the end. And that would be another place to do it. Usually, you only want to bring forth information related to an agendized item, really. Any, any questions on the sharing information? Yeah. Commissioner Wyler?
So, I don't know, I, I'm perusing around and, and I find an article that I know would be of interest to one planning commissioner in particular, but not the group. Is it okay to just say, hey, I saw this article, you might be interested in it? Not that it's something of discussion purposes for the commission itself. It's just something of interest that I know that a particular commissioner would be interested in reading. Is, that's not a violation then, unless that commissioner sent it to another one, and that one sent it to another one, and so on down the road.
Exactly. Yep, that's it. So as long as you're not constituting a serial meeting, a hub and spoke, or a daisy chain situation there, you're fine. So as long as it's not a quorum or majority, you can communicate on matters, including sharing an article or something like that. You would just want to, you know, be careful about forwarding something. If someone receives it to you and you forward that on, you know, keep in mind, like, well, not sure if this has been communicated to another commissioner yet or not. So just, you know, be, err on the side of caution with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
So I thought I heard you said that the article would have to be related to any agenda item that we're discussing at the commissioning meeting, correct? So if, if the item is not being discussed or anything previously or any future, that article is not in violation of the Brown Act?
That's right.
Okay.
And that's.
That's why I wanted to get some.
Right, it's not in violation of the Brown Act. I guess, thinking about that, and I thought of that same thing, you know, as I was doing this, typing up this PowerPoint, and I was thinking about that concept, like, yeah, I guess that would not be a Brown Act violation. But on the other hand, you know, what's the purpose of sending something that's not related to any planning commission item, you know? And so, not, not saying don't do it, but, you know, it's like, for example, if you're sending like a cat meme or something like that, you know, it's like, well, that's not a Brown Act violation, but it's also probably not a, you know, good idea for some reason to do that. So I'm not saying that that's what you had in mind or anything like that, but, you know. But you're right. If it's not with an official business item or anything like that, that would not be a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay, perfect. That's what I wanted to know.
If it pertain to procedures, however, like, hey, look, I found this article about a planning commission in another city, and it looks like they did these procedures, and this is how they did this. I would say that that would constitute, or potentially could constitute a Brown Act violation, just because that is official business. We're talking about the procedures of our own planning commission.
Right, okay, understood.
Yep.
You know, we, we, article that is good for socialization and that kind of thing outside or as an informational thing, I don't think we should be restrictive to not sending those articles out.
Yeah.
As lo, as long as it does not interfere with the planning commission agenda, then
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
You're sending it to one person, right?
What?
I mean, one commission.
That is why I wanted to clarify, because regardless if you send it to one or two person, but that article does not relate it to our business, then we should be okay.
If it's not related to the business, right. I, you know, to err on the side of caution, you probably don't want to disseminate to everyone, unless it's just like, no, I really believe this article that does not relate to business would be really helpful for everyone to see. I, you know, you could always check in with me, too. I, you know, you could always check in with me too, before you, you know, you're like, man, I really want to send this, send this article out to everyone, maybe I should check in with the city attorney's office just to make sure here.
Gotcha, okay, perfect, understood, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, anything else on the sharing info? And finally, issue number three, remote participation has come up as well. So of course, we had our virtual meetings, we had our remote, we were all virtual, well, except me and minutes clerk and, you know, Adam was in here at some, some point, the former director was in here. There, the former director wasn't even in here, wasn't it? It was just me and the minutes clerk, basically, and the chair. And, but now everyone's back, we, okay, remote participation, first of all, non-COVID, okay? This is the general requirements under the Brown Act. Teleconferencing participation is authorized under the Brown Act, it always has been. That's audio or video participation, but there are some requirements that need to be followed in non-pandemic times. You have to post the agenda at each teleconference location. So let's just use an example of some commissioner saying, I'm going to be at home, I can't get out of my home, can I participate from my home? Okay, well, in non-COVID times, you have to post your agenda at your home. The teleconference locations need to be identified in the notice and agenda, so your address will need to be posted in there. The teleconference locations must be accessible to the public, so you got to open up your home or wherever you're at for the public to come and, you know, give you comments. And then at least a quorum must actually participate within the city's jurisdiction as well. So you can't have, well, I'm in Hawaii and I'm in Alaska and I'm in, you know, you have to have four who are within the boundaries of the city of Escondido, okay? So that's the general requirement that existed pre-COVID. Well, COVID, we had executive orders that came out that suspended these particular requirements, and that's why you all could participate virtually at your homes or wherever you were participating and did not have to post your notice. And we did not have to put your, each of your addresses down and all that, because these executive orders suspended these requirements. The executive orders expire, the particular executive order expires on September 30th, 2021. There's no indication, you know, whether that will be, you know, pushed past September 30th, 2021, or if that's a hard deadline and, you know, no more relaxation of these requirements after that. We'll just have to see what, what happens. But as of now, September 30th, 2021 is the, is the deadline for that. So after that date, we're back to these requirements. And then this final bullet point, I think, is just important, just a practically how it works, you know, with this from the city's perspective. City staff and and our city attorney's office, our recommendation is that commissioners, council members, all board members, attend meetings in person. But there are situations where it could be that a commissioner, board member, council member would like to participate, but they would like to participate teleconference, audio or video. The city evaluates that remote participation on a case by case basis. We look at feasibly, can this be done, you know, do we have the practical means of doing this? Can we get the technology hooked up and all that sort of thing? And right now, it's, it's more feasible than not, you know, and it probably, but if these requirements are back in place, this final line, this is more difficult and less likely to implement once the executive order is lifted. And probably, you know, putting myself in your shoes, I mean, personally, I would not want my address, you know, posted on agendas and open my door and the public coming in, you know, my home or wherever I'm going to be, you know, I'd rather be in person or if I just can't make it, or, or, you know, posting the agenda not at your home, but let's say you're vacationing in Hawaii, you know, I don't want to, you know, post where I'm vacationing in Hawaii as well. So less likely to implement once those, once that executive order is lifted. So that's sort of the state of where we're at with the remote participation requirements. Any questions on any of that? Final thoughts, when in doubt, err on the side of caution and please reach out to, you can reach out to me specifically, individually with any questions. Any final questions?
Nope.
Hey, and thank you all, by the way, I mean, people really take the Brown Act seriously, I appreciate that. And, you know, keep it up. I've, I've enjoyed the, the communication from you, asking me questions, thank you very much on, on those issues and, and don't, you know, don't be afraid to keep approaching me with those questions. Thanks.
Okay, no more questions on that. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's always good to have a refresher on Brown Act parameters. Oral communications, Jessica, I don't think we have any more. Planning commissioners, any issues to raise, address, bring to everyone's attention?
I would like to ask if it might be possible for staff to provide just a short update, if you will, or info, info item perhaps on a future agenda. I'm not wedded to when, but we've heard now, and I heard at city council as well, these questions that have continuously come from local workers wanting to be part of the process to, I mean, to be able to bid or, I don't know, be able to be hired locally or, does the city have any, does the city have any recourse in any of that? And if so, what might it be or what do you currently do in that realm? And also, what could we do to make it more feasible?
Sure, we'll, we can discuss that at a staff level and determine if that's something that is able, is, is under the purview of the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. Okay, then I can talk with you offline then.
Perfect.
Okay.
So I had just had one question. So any information on the housing element update?
Not at this point, we are working through things.
Other questions, comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
Did I get a chance?
Directors, directors report, it's right here in front of me.
I just wanted to let you know, we are not going to be holding a meeting on the 14th of September, the next meeting will be the 28th.
Okay.
Heads up on that. That's all.
That's all. Thank you so much. All right, we're adjourned.